Mr. Stella.
Four.
Mr. Anjanopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Here.
Mr. Delaquale.
Here.
Mr. Fernandino.
Here.
Ms. Keith.
Here.
Annual notice of this meeting has been provided by the following names. Annual notice was sent to the record, the observer, township clerk, and posted in the lobby of the town hall and board office, setting for incoming scheduled work meetings and public meetings of the board.
Thank you for coming tonight. I initially wanted to mention we have some students that we want to honor tonight. FBLA, as well as North Jersey Choir and Mark Barcstra students that we want to recognize for some great accomplishments. So we have some staff members here, some of our teachers, advisors, our head school administration, district administration members are here. I very quickly wanted to mention before we turn it over to that presentation, that at the March meeting, March 24th, we plan on doing a presentation on the district's reconfiguration for next year, including a new middle school. So we wanted to update community staff, students, parents on that initiative. We have done this before with the district architect, which probably got some small changes. I know depending on the time of year, sometimes people haven't seen the presentations. One of them is on the website, so we're kind of going to do our own condensed version and hopefully be able to answer any questions that anybody has. For the remainder of the year, we'll probably be doing that here and there, as well as maybe a separate presentation, not even affiliated with the board meeting. One of the things we have to do tonight, it's part of the code that I learned maybe yesterday, it's a new part of the code, is that we have to report publicly, every year we report publicly on our state assessment scores for our students, but we also have to now report on our graduation pathways. So our high school administration, as well as our district administrators are doing a nice report for us at the end of the year that's been required for the last few years of how students graduate high school. So obviously there's different pathways they can take, whether they pass ARC or alternate proficiency, alternate assessment. So I'm going to quickly report on those numbers, and then we're going to turn it over for the presentation for students. So last year, we had 116 of our graduates in the high school that graduated through passing the ELA in math portions of ARC, which is now NJAS away. Nineteen students graduated through substitute competency tests, not in ELA in math, so that could be something called an acuplacer or the MARMY test, which is called the ASVAT test, or PSAT or SAT scores. Three students graduated through the portfolio appeals process, so that's something that we actually have staff members work on with students if they cannot pass the assessment table of their portfolio, where they had a number of assessments and documents and papers that they've done that we grade and they passed that way. Seven students graduated through alternate requirements specified for IPs, so if a student has a classification and has an IP, they usually have to sit for the assessment, but they do not have to pass it. Forty-seven students graduated through multiple pathways, maybe they might have done one thing for English and another thing for math. Ten students did not graduate, and zero students were denied graduation only because of failure of past ARC assessments, substitute competency tests for portfolio appeals. So it's a nice high percentage, we're in the nineties and we'd like to keep it that way. Like I said, our staff members are doing an awesome job, and the state has been updating the requirements every year, they keep extending the ability to take other assessments besides ARC. So we'll keep you updated, next year we will do this as well, and like I said, this is something new that we have to report to the public. We'll probably just include it in our testing presentation next year, it's allowed to be that way. So far, so good, and we'll keep you updated. So again, if you are available for March, we will be presenting on the district's reconfiguration for next year. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to the high school administration, the district administration, Ms. Bruno, Ms. Brennan, as well as some other staff members that I see here, to honor some of our students for their awesome accomplishments. Thank you.
Okay. We have some of our staff members here and some of their groups that we'd like to honor and recognize this evening. The first group I'd like to call up are our advisors for FBLA, Diane Jankowski and Anna Savello. They'd like to tell you a little bit about what our students have accomplished. They've done a much better job than I would, so I'm going to hand it over to them.
Hi, thanks for coming. Okay, so just a quick abridged version of what FBLA is and what it entails for these kids. So FBLA is a chapter, we have a chapter in our school, and the kids join our chapter, and what they do when they join is we try to curtail the events that they will participate in to their likes and interests. So we have a student that's really good at computers, we gear them towards a computer-based event and public speaking and so on and so forth. So once that happens, there's two parts to FBLA they can test, where they can present. So the first round are the regional events where they test. So today we're going to honor the students who tested in our regional events and scored in the top five within the state. So what happens is when they test, they test against other students in the states. In the state, sorry. So our students tested up against tons of other districts, I'd say over 50 or 60 districts within the state. And then these students that we're going to honor today scored in the top five. So that means that in the test that they took, they were the most proficient and scored within that number. Now, March 18, 19, and 20, we're going to take our performance-based group, and they will perform, and for example, we have somebody presenting a product that they're going to sell, fresh mozzarella. They're presenting that to a panel of judges. Some of the judges are professionals, superintendents, supervisors, teachers, they run the gamut of the professional community. We actually have two of our supervisors attending as well, and those kids will present. And then once they present, they'll be scored, there's a rubric that they're scored, and those kids then will rank it also through the state, and then have an opportunity to attend a national conference in Utah this summer. So it really is a lot of work, the kids are already working on their projects, and they will continue to do so through March 18. I have a quote, so excuse me if I start walking all over. The following students are the ones that scored between first place and fifth place in the state. So if you'd like to come up and get your award. Iris Gonzalez. Top five in the state, fifth in the state. Journalism. Victoria Nico. Top five, third in the state for journalism as well. We have a great journalism, we have a great journalism program. Another journalism student, Alexa Barreras, top five in the state, second in the state. Colin Kittredge, again, organizational leadership, second in the state. And Joseph Delacanha, our freshman, so this is very big, computer problem solving, second place in the state. So just to add on to this, they all took another test already, and then will take, will be able to be scored at another, so the top six will actually now be scored for second and third. That's where we get the kids that will go to the nationals. So they had to take another test, they did it in-house, and we'll see what their results are when we go to the states, and hopefully we'll see these five going with us to Salt City in June. I just want to say this is really a big deal because we're up against the big gigantic schools. This is not just Linnhurst against a school the same size as Linnhurst, it's not that, it's against the academies in Bergen County. It's against all our northern Bergen County schools that are, they're youths, they're monsters. We're like a little teeny mini school, and top five people placed like this is a big, big deal. I just want to say that.
Our school offers a journalism class, which is probably why our kids did so well in journalism, however...
Which is probably why our kids did so well in journalism, we have an editor and an editor-in-chief in the top five, however, we don't offer necessarily an organizational leadership class or something else that the kids place in, and we're still being able to place in the top five in NJAS is a huge deal. So we're really proud of them.
Okay, next up, we have Ms. Wise and Ms. Brennan.
I am here to present the choir awards. Each year, we prepare choir students who nervously attend auditions for our North Jersey Region One Honors Choir. So hundreds of students from across North Jersey take a chance to become part of this prestigious performance group. Just to tell you how rigorous the audition process is, you have, again, hundreds of students, they go into a room by themselves, and they are in front of three judges who have their back turned to the student who comes in. They have to sing through three scales, they then will have to do a tonal memory room, which scares them to death because they basically put music in front of them, they play it for them once and they say, "Go," and they have to sing it back to them. And then they prepare a solo also that they have to, again, sing without any kind of musical accompaniment, which is a very difficult thing to do vocally. They score them accordingly, and of course, the top scores do become part of this group. Happy to present certificates to the following students who successfully completed their auditions and became a member of the North Jersey Region One Honors Choir. They had a great experience, and it is a very difficult group to be a part of because once they make it, you think that the hard work is over, but they have five, there's four, I'm sorry, four five-hour-long rehearsals. They have to learn a lot of music in a very short period of time, and they are, they come out of their exhaustion, a lot of them sort of doubt, gosh, you know, am I going to be able to get through this? And they did. They had an incredible performance at Morris Moles High School on February 1st, and I couldn't be more proud of the work they put into it and what they got out of it. So congratulations to JJ Ackman. Sabrina Salento. David Honseca. Carlos Salazar. Sarah Samarun. We had one person who couldn't be with us tonight who qualified. Unfortunately, she got really sick during the rehearsal process, and she wasn't able to complete, but she did qualify, and I wanted to recognize also Alexis Award. Let me demonstrate, yeah, we should have prepared something for you guys, we put some of your, some of your little something. Okay, some of these, if they're not seniors already, some of these students are going to go on to audition for the next step up, which is all-state choir. Last year, we had three students who are going to be graduating this year, actually be a part of it, and we wish the younger ones luck for this coming audition process. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, congratulations to our students, and thank you to our staff who is an awesome job working with our students and all these endeavors that they're undertaking, so thank you. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Egan, our state monitor, for state monitor's report.
Good evening. Do you expect to give the decision in the district, do you expect to report that the construction of the middle school is almost finished, they are ahead of schedule, so that the confidence of the middle school will be open to operating in September? Would you call the budget for next year, still being prepared, unnecessary element would be known of the state, the numbers are, the governor gave his speech today, the actual numbers will be received by all the districts sometime on Thursday, so we can continue to finalize the budget for next year. And finally, the forensic ordinance are definitely in now, and they started working, they own all the specific records, and they will be interviewing employees that are not at that stage yet for the interviews, but they are working. And I just wanted to make sure that the public understands that when they do finish their audit, and they write their report, that report will be made totally public, give it to everybody, depending upon how thorough they are or if they run into problems or difficulties. So it's hard to determine or predict how long that process will take. My experience has been in the past, at least a year, at the end of the year, the public will have the total report. So it includes my report, thank you.
I'll turn it over to Ms. Keith in about 30 seconds, you just have to run out for a second.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from January 28, 2022?
Roll call.
Mr. Bezouti.
Here.
Mr. Anjanopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Mr. Delaquale.
Four.
Mr. Fernandino.
Four.
Ms. Keith.
All right, so we're moving on to finance. There's nobody signed up.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of finance committee may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained.
Item number five.
We have... You want to hold on five seconds?
Yes.
Okay. I make the motion, we adopt one through four and six to 12.
Sir.
Roll call.
Mr. Bezouti.
Four.
Mr. Stella.
Four.
Mr. Anjanopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Mr. Delaquale.
Four.
Mr. Fernandino.
Four.
Ms. Keith.
All right, so we're moving on to finance. There's nobody signed up.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of finance committee may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained.
Item number five.
We have... You want to hold on five seconds?
Yes.
Okay. I make the motion, we adopt one through four and six to 12.
Sir.
Roll call.
Mr. Bezouti.
Four.
Mr. Stella.
Four.
Mr. Anjanopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Mr. Delaquale.
Four.
Mr. Fernandino.
Four.
Ms. Keith.
All right, so we're moving on to finance. There's nobody signed up.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of finance committee may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. I make the motion, we adopt one through four and six to 12.
Roll call.
Mr. Bezouti.
Four.
Mr. Stella.
Four.
Mr. Anjanopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Mr. Delaquale.
Four.
Mr. Fernandino.
Four.
Ms. Keith.
All right, so we're moving on to finance. There's nobody signed up.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of finance committee may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. I make the motion, we adopt one through four and six to 12. Roll call.
I'll turn it over to Ms. Keith in about 30 seconds, you just have to run out for a second.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from January 28, 2022?
Roll call.
Mr. Bezouti.
Four.
Mr. Stella.
Four.
Mr. Anjanopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Mr. Delaquale.
Four.
Mr. Fernandino.
Four.
Ms. Keith.
All right, so we're moving on to finance. There's nobody signed up.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of finance committee may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. I make the motion, one, two, one to two.
Do we have a motion?
Sir. Make the motion.
Roll call.
Mr. Bezouti.
Four.
Mr. Stella.
Four.
Mr. Anjanopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Mr. Delaquale.
Four.
Mr. Fernandino.
Four.
Ms. Keith.
All right, so we're moving on to finance. There's nobody signed up.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of finance committee may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained.
Item number five.
We have... You want to hold on five seconds?
Yes.
Okay. I make the motion, we adopt one through four and six to 12. Roll call.
Mr. Bezouti.
Four.
Mr. Stella.
Four.
Mr. Anjanopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Mr. Delaquale.
Four.
Mr. Fernandino.
Four.
Ms. Keith.
All right, so we're moving on to finance. There's nobody signed up.
I make the motion, we adopt one through four and six to 12.
Roll call.
Mr. Bezouti.
Four.
Mr. Stella.
Four.
Mr. Anjanopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Mr. Delaquale.
Four.
Mr. Fernandino.
Four.
Ms. Keith.
All right, so we're moving on to finance. There's nobody signed up. I want you to explain exactly what that is all about, because I was not here for that, and I want to know what the $181,000 is, what tech services are, and exactly how much is spent already on the referendum. Well, that's what I sorted in Charlottesville, but you have here a special resolution where it was for the referendum, so what is it? It's a different number.
Does this mean the fees we pay the township for doing part of the referendum at the high school?
That's part of the fees. For what? For the referendum?
Correct.
What the 2016 referendum to do all the schools? Is there any way I can get a mic down and everything that was favoring?
Table number?
Table. Maybe.
Take the motion here.
Yeah, make a motion with table number five to be clarified. Second, on chisee.
Roll call.
Four. Mr. Bezouti.
Four.
Mr. Stella.
Four.
Mr. Anjanopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Mr. Delaquale.
Four.
Mr. Fernandino.
Four.
Ms. Keith.
So everybody's clear, we're tabling number five under finance, so we can have more information regarding what that's representing. Before I read the policy here, I just want you to know that here are two new books that the superintendent had just did, maybe copies off what's online with the policies. After going through the policies, I found out there's a lot of old policies that are live policies that are not online, and we're going to update them and put them online, especially like when he did the hiring of the middle school principals, there was a policy in place that wasn't online that actually would inform the school community committee. So it's very important to make sure that all policy books are looked at, even ones that aren't online. So I think we're going to maybe make copies, send them in, new things, and maybe archive them on there. So this is just the beginning, and it's a long, tedious job to, the girl has to print out every single one, because they couldn't send it over in one shot. So I'm going to be with my committee on chairing it, to make sure that we have both policy books here, in manual and online, and be perfect. On the back, anyone who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of policies and rules, regulations, committing a certificate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. I make motions one, two, one to two. Do we have a motion?
Sir. Make the motion.
Roll call.
Mr. Bezouti.
Four.
Mr. Stella.
Four.
Mr. Anjanopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Mr. Delaquale.
Four.
Mr. Fernandino.
Four.
Ms. Keith.
All right, so we're moving on to finance. There's nobody signed up.
I make the motion to accept items letter A through letter P.
Sir.
Roll call.
Mr. Bezouti.
Four.
Mr. Stella.
Four.
Mr. Anjanopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Mr. Delaquale.
Four.
Mr. Fernandino.
Four.
Ms. Keith.
All right, so we're moving on to finance. There's nobody signed up. Okay, and last one, when Mr. Egan said that, this school may be turned over to work maybe eight more days in a minute, or whenever the board to turn it over, I have a concern about the safety, because I understand that maybe they're not going to be doing the emergency exit onto Ridge Road. So I would like to put on record certain things that could be looked into, to make sure that we make it as safe as you can, but like, at one point, Mr. Egan, I guess you should be the one to answer this, is, does the board of ed take a vote on accepting this school? Will we have to vote on it?
Yes.
Okay, so are my safety concerns, or has a fire official and a police chief make reports on if it's going to be one exit in and one exit out? Is that going to be a safety issue? We need to see reports on that. I'd like to see a traffic study in case something...
Four.
Mr. Delacqua.
Four.
Mr. Ferrandino.
Four.
Ms. Keeff.
Four.
Athletics and student activities. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Athletics and Student Activities Committee may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing done, I make a motion to accept number one. Sir.
Roll call.
Mr. Bezouti.
Four.
Ms. Stella.
Four.
Mr. Renjanopoulos.
Four.
Ms. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Vudoff.
Four.
Mr. Delacqua.
Four.
Mr. Ferrandino.
Four.
Ms. Keeff.
Four.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Personnel, may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing done, I make a motion to accept items letter A through letter P. Sir.
Roll call.
Mr. Bezouti.
Four.
Ms. Stella.
Four.
Mr. Renjanopoulos.
Four.
Ms. Donovan. Four. Ms. Vudoff.
Four.
Mr. Delacqua.
Four.
Mr. Ferrandino.
Four.
Ms. Keeff.
Four.
I have some new business. Okay, and last month, when Mr. Egan said that, like, this school might be turned over to, or maybe April 8th and the minutes, or whenever the government turn it over, I have a concern about the safety because I understand that maybe they're not going to be doing the emergency exit onto Ridge Road. So I would like to put on record certain things that could be looked into to make sure that we make it as safe as you can. But like, at one point, Mr. Egan, I guess you'd be the one to answer this, is, does the board of head take a vote on accepting this school? Will we have to vote on it?
Yes.
Okay, so my safety concerns, or has the fire official and the police chief make reports if it's going to be one exit in and one exit out? Is that going to be a safety issue? We need to see reports on that. I'd like to see a traffic study in case something happens on Page Avenue, or a house is on fire, the children could be trapped into that middle school area. Like, what is the plan of action there? Does, let me see, also, does the school that's being built with safety reasons, is it being built with the standards of homeland security? Is the fire marshal reports and building inspector have reports on if it's going to be a one entrance now? Because it doesn't seem like that second entrance, the second exit's going to be there. Will they have reports on this for the people to see? Also, I'd like to know about, considering if this does happen, that it's the one thing, because I see no action over there at all, I live over there. Will the school board be able to have insurance company actually make sure that we will be insured, knowing it's one way in and one way out? I'm really concerned about that, because everything has a fence around it, there's a wall, and I'm concerned about the safety of the children, and it needs to be addressed. And the other thing, which is most important, I understand that there'll be a CO. I'd like to see a third-party CO person brought in, because if the town is going to do the CO, they're building it. So I think it's only fair that Detective Ward, that we get somebody who is an independent person. And the other thing is too, is to think about, if something happens and your kids can't get out onto Page Avenue, what are we going to do as the safety of the children? Those are my concerns, they're on on record, and I want it under the new business, and I would like to have, maybe you could give some answers, and to make sure that, we make sure that the kids and the school is going to be safe.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Just respond a little bit, say that we are planning to, uh, police first respond to discuss some of those issues.
Yes, I appreciate it, and thinking, writing, that it is very big concern for at least me, because I was, even before I started being running for the board, I've been after the town to make sure that this emergency exit is going to be in place, because it would give the children a faster way to get off the premises, because I know like the fire drills and different things, they have to be so many feet away from the building, and it's very tight up there, and the children need to have at least two ways to get out. So if something happens with Page Avenue's block, just say, Dr. Bid, the house went on fire over there, you can't get the kids off the premises, because it's all walled in and blocked with fences. So I'm really concerned about it, and I would like the people to look into and get things in writing, because before we accept the school, we should know what's going to happen here.
Yeah, so, I mean, some of the things we touched on, I would like to do, obviously, we should have to work on law enforcement, and obviously, the person fighting for their families as well, fire, AMTs, is a traffic study would be one. So just overall security and safety, which covers some of the different areas, so you can mention a few of them, and just different emergency procedures, which also falls under security and safety. So it's something that actually, one of the self-shoulders.
And it's only true, it doesn't seem like the emergency exit that was in the plans, that got taken out of the plans, is not there, which was only put there as an emergency exit.
Oh, we have, according to, in my right of this time, we have the right to refuse the acceptance of the middle school if that building's not down and that access is there.
Thank you.
Am I correct on that?
What is the reason?
I'm not a building expert, the bottom line is that the building isn't finished yet. The outside isn't finished yet. You bring up a lot of concerns and a lot of people, and I think we should just wait until it's finished. And then, when the building is expected, and part of the inspection process is that the school insurance company has to make an inspection of the building also.
Thank you. Well, I'm just, I'm sorry if I like to jump the gun, I like to get things resolved, and maybe to resolve it before the school is turned over and everything, but right now, as of now, no, it's still waiting.
Yeah, if you, if you, I understand where you're coming from, that you're a little premature. So save all those comments, you know, and send it, send it to me, or send it to the superintendent, and we'll send it over to the town, that these are some of the issues that you bring up.
I appreciate it so much. The children's safety is coming first.
Absolutely.
And I just want to also say that the town has been very receptive to concerns that I brought up, and I can probably speak for, you know, other administrators as well, so, and that's that. So we've, you know, I'm very happy with the responses I'm getting. Yes, there's still a lot of questions for sure, and they're valid questions, I can answer them, so, I just sort of.
Just, I don't, I think it can hear you. When you're building a building, your schematic designs, your reviews, your acceptance, your construction programs, so you're commenting to be mature, this should have been done in design for building broke ground. You've not changed the scope and design and layout of a building three months or four months before it's about to open. That's done on feet, or which is so cheap.
You're absolutely right, and all the, all the design plans made by the architect were sent to the Department of Education, they, they looked at it, and they approved it, that the building, that all educational designs, including the safety of the children. What's being taught up here, and it could have been mess if you, I could have, instead of just dropping it all like this, if you had these concerns, that if you couldn't separate, share them before this went standing. So I could have gotten asked for it, but now you just gave it now, so we're going to go forward with it. I assure you that the plans, one review, can be what you wrote down, and probably pass it on to the dresser.
And Mr. Egan, he knew I brought this up to you already a few months ago.
Yes, and I can give the same answer, if the building wasn't finished yet, now you're already giving down, give it to me.
Yeah, but if you, you put the minutes.
The union will be more than, will be highest, that you just.
But the thing is, is this is because the emergency exit's not going to be done. And you put in your minutes that April 8th, the school could be turned over to us, guess what? That's only two months away.
That's exactly right.
But nothing's done.
But the timing is, you're talking to the construction foreman or owner. They're on, they're on plan to have the inside of the building finished, and, except for maybe a punch.
Okay, well, I'm being proactive with this, because I don't want to be grossing you, it's turned over and it's not done.
As I, I asked you before, wouldn't you write and give it to me? You just did it the first time, mention it, I still don't have enough time for it. Make a copy of that, and I'll, I'll take it.
I have to rewrite it for you.
Oh, okay.
I do want to just piggyback and say, for the gentleman's question, I'm sorry, I forgot the name, that the Department of Vet does have to approve everything, whether it goes through the town, or to us, or to the project process. And we can't do anything in any of our buildings, in terms of facilities, without the Department of Education approval, so. I mean, if they do a walkthrough for Q-SAP, and we're checking things, and they say, you know, high school desks are in a, you know, in an unsafe way in a classroom, we have to change them, so. I mean, they're very much on top of it, it's, it's, there's a process that we have to go through. So, I mean, I do feel comfortable that, that that's going to happen as well. So, you know, things do have to be checked at every step of the process, there's different points that, that things have to be approved, so. It's difficult sometimes, because we're not involved in that directly, because it is the town's project at this point. But we have been kept in the loop, and anytime we've had a question, we have responded. But it is getting, you know, close, and I think we all have concerns. So we're, we're going to address all the concerns that we have, and that's why next, even next week, we're going to have a presentation, just in terms of very good things that we're doing.
I'm looking forward to that one, but beyond Board of Vet, Board of Vet has a particular scope, and then you have town, county, and state. There's a difference levels of skills that these people bring to these projects.
Sure.
The reason why I'm saying is, I've spent 20-plus years in technology, in the last nine, in building buildings.
Sure.
Right? So this is not coming from, hey, you said something, and it makes sense. I do this, technology and facilities. So when somebody, there's no way for me to build a building, $35 million, residential floor, right now, for a university, and have me three months away from opening doors and say, well, let's figure out where the door's going to go. Like, there's no way. I'm doing this right at Jersey City, Jersey City, Hudson County, the state of Jersey, but never allowed it. There's no way to get to this point without having these things in writing and approved. So I'm just questioning, or I'm intrigued as to who made these approvals? Do we have it in writing, from the state, from the county, or from the township? That is more of that responsibility, than what state does.
Yeah, the plans were definitely after the kids. Just like the plans for our own K-5 girlfriend and Mark approved as we go through the process, so. And that one, we're dealing with directly, so we know for a fact that whatever we're asking for, a lot of times, they'll make something else, you know, a lot, as you know, they might have to provide something else, or provide rationale. So, you know, I, I think that clearly, it's, it's a big undertaking over in a building. A lot of us have not been involved in opening a random building, but a lot of us have been involved in moving buildings, and moving people's staff members and students, but to actually open a building, so we all definitely have, you know, questions. No matter what, even with the right approvals, as you know, there's still going to be things that we're going to have to intentionally tweak, hopefully not a lot. But, you know, we talked about a traffic study, we could do all the traffic studies in the world, until that building opens on the first day, there's, you know, 600 kids coming in, it's probably going to be another traffic study at that point, tweaking that, so. Obviously, things that have to be approved, and the knowledge of things that we should have to be behind, so. We share your concerns too, but I think everything's been done correctly in terms of approvals, passing them.
May I have a motion from the jury?
Motion.
Can I have a second? Good night, everybody, thank you so much for coming out tonight. All in favor?